I'm going to call the Tuesday, January 16th, 2024 meeting of the Esang Meadow Planning Board to order. I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Punderson, Mr. Chair Swallow, Mr. Terrell, excuse me, Mr. Fonseca, Mr. Chair Swallow.
I am Russell Denver. Mr. Terrell, Mr. Punderson are all present. We're joined by Alex, and I'm going to put your last name. But Alex is new to the Office of Planning and Community Development, so we welcome him to his first planning board meeting. Glad to have you on board. So they do that.
So the first item is, before we do the minutes, is there anyone in the audience who may be recording this meeting? And if so, please state your name and the method in which you are recording this meeting, sir.
Raymond F. Catuno, Jr. I'm a court reporter, and I'll be recording it via stenographic means.
And who are you recording the meeting on or for?
On behalf of Attorney Fancy and not the entire meeting, just the one specific portion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So the approval of the January 2nd, 2024 open session minutes. Do I have a motion to accept?
Move to approve the January 2nd, 2023 open session meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
I think that should be 2024, not 2023.
2024.
So I'll amend the amendment motion to reflect that.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay. Hearing none, that passes. So there's no old business, new business? None, Alex? Okay. So public hearings, there has been a request for a continuance for a special permit granted to Doris Dental. So I have a motion to approve the continuance until... Is there a specific request, Alex?
No, the next meeting.
Until our next meeting, which is February 6th.
Yeah, move to continue the public hearing to February 26th, 2024, 6:00 PM in the Pleasant View, Senior Center. February 6th, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the Pleasant View Senior Center. A second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay. Hearing none, that matter passes. On B, there's also been a request for a continuance for a fabrication shop located at 45 Deer Park Drive. So do I have a motion to approve the continuance?
Move to approve the continue to continue the public hearing to February 6th, 2024, 6:00 PM in the Pleasant View Senior Center. Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay. Hearing none, that matter passes. Item C.
Case Site 2-2024-02, request for site plan review approval of a construction of a solar carport and associated paved parking at 90 Denzlow Road, accessors parcel ID 10-151, located in the Industrial Garden Park zoning district. Applicant John Mayberry, 90 Denzlow Road, East Long Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Applicant? Right up front, please.
Good evening. John Mayberry, 215 Prospect Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. In for the request to add a parking lot to the three acres that I purchased a couple of years ago, adjacent to my property. It's now contiguous there. And the purpose is, we started our electric vehicle fleet, so we now have work trucks that are electric vehicles. So we're doing a new parking lot with a canopy, solar, be 10 fast charge stations put there so that we can continue to buy the electric vehicles and do the right thing for the environment.
And you already have an existing solar carport, correct?
Yeah, we do. So we did did one out back. I mean, I have retention or detention basins everywhere now, but this one was again another did George did the geotech, Michael Smith did, you know, all the plan work. So tried to follow all the rules and lines to just make it smooth and easy for us to, in the spring, put the parking area in and start charging electric vehicles.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review for the construction of a solar carport and associated paved parking at 90 Denzlow Road.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay. Hearing none, this matter passes. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Next item.
Case SP-2024-01, request for special permit for me time by Tyler Massage Therapy Facility at 60 Shaker Road, accessors parcel ID 27-170-0, located in the Business Owning District, applicant Tyler Bowie Edge, 1149 E Main Street, PO Box 30943, Springfield, Mass. 01103.
It's the applicant here. So tell us a little bit about the request.
So I'll be opening up a massage studio in the new solo salon suites. It will be open from Tuesday to Saturday from about 9:00 to 7:00 PM. I'll be specializing in post-surgical recovery for anyone who receives any type of surgery, but will also be offering massage services as well.
Are you going to be the first individual in those co-located parcels?
I do believe I'm the only massage therapist so far. I know there's a few other hair salons, but it's all cosmetic, so barber shops, no salons.
Good. Any questions from board? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for me time by Tyler, a massage therapist facility at 60 Shaker Road.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussions? Do I have a motion to approve? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay. Hearing none, this matter passes. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I believe you can call the item.
So would you please call the next item? Sure can. Case Site-2022-07, request for site plan review for the construction of a warehouse building and associated site improvements at 330 Chestnut Street, accessors parcel ID 18-38-0 on a 40.35 acre lot in Drill Garden Park zoning district. Applicant East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC, 1260 Selton Road, Biscuit, New Jersey.
Channelway.
Thank you. 08854, the planning board will hold a hold a public meeting on this application, which may include, without limitation, reconsidering or reaffirming any prior votes on this applicant application and/or reopening the public hearing on this application.
So both Mr. Fonseca and Mr. Terrell will be recusing themselves from this meeting. So now is the appropriate time to get up and leave. Before we have the first person come up, I made this talk last at our last meeting. We will have a civil discussion. There will be no insults, no personal name-calling, no accusations of improper behavior against this board or any other public official. This is the town of East Long Meadow. It is not Washington DC where there's name-calling and everyone gets upset with each other. But we will have a civil meeting. If you are not civil, you will lose your opportunity to speak. I will rule you out of order, period. And with that said, I'm going to ask the town's attorney, Attorney Tims, to please come forward and explain how this project is back in front of the board. Attorney Tims is here to assist the planning board. He is not here to answer questions about what might be the outcome of the case. He's not here to answer questions from the public. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Tims.
Thank you, sir. Jesse Belcher-Timmy, Town Council for East Long Meadow.
Hold one second, I just need to get a little bit closer.
Sure.
Can hear you a little better.
So just a brief description of sort of how we got here and where exactly we are when this application was denied last.
Could you turn around so people maybe hear you?
Sure. Yeah. Yes, you folks know this already.
Or the microphone.
Yeah. Microphone?
It doesn't have an off phone.
Oh. Low tech.
No?
Oh, there we go. How's that? Perfect.
A little closer?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, so how we got here and where we are. Last summer, when the site plan review was ultimately denied by this board, the applicants appealed. That case has sort of wound its way through the land court in the context of that and a bunch of sort of allegations, concerns, responses, whatnot. We had discussions about a possible remand, both in the context of possibly reconsidering this, but also in the context of clearing up some issues regarding the notice for the meeting that happened on May 16th. There were some concerns about the notice for that meeting. There was so there was a meeting on the 16th and a subsequent one in June where the vote ultimately took place. So in the context of both cleaning that up and bringing this back here with maybe some optimism about a resolution or some sort of medium, we all agreed to have the court order a remand. The matter is now been ordered by the judge back here. This board now has 90 days to hold this meeting. They can reopen a public hearing or not. They can take more evidence or not. They can rescind prior votes or not, reaffirm, vote however they so choose. And then based on the outcome of that, it will either return to the land court or everyone will be happy and will move on.
Okay. Can you please explain why there's only three of us left here to participate in this decision?
So because this is still a part of the prior proceeding, so one of the things that the court ordered and the parties agreed to is because of the concerns about notice for the May 16th and June 20th meetings, those meetings essentially never occurred. Anything that was introduced for those two meetings and those two meetings alone are not before the board, but everything that happened before that is properly in the record. Two new members of the board were not here for any of those hearings, so they cannot vote on any of those matters. So we have three members here. Because it's site plan, it just needs to be a majority, two of the three remaining members to take any action with respect to it.
So just before you go, so Mr. Punderson, Ms. Chair Swallow, any specific questions from Attorney Tims? So just to reiterate very quickly, if you didn't catch all that, so everything, everything that was heard by this board, any testimony or evidence offered on or before May 2nd is still on the record for this planning board to consider. Anything after that time, anything after the May 2nd meeting is no longer valid, essentially. The planning staff developed for me a list of individuals who spoke at our June 20th, 2023 meeting. I will very quickly tell you who they were. Mark Berman, Deputy Superintendent, DPW. Mark Williams, Police Chief. Paul Morissette, Fire Chief. Michael Pill, Counsel to the Fields. Linda Beasy, Mary Hurley, Christina Cooper, Gail Moran, Neil Williams, Margaret Gorlay, John Burnham, Joanne Congrow, Ralph Page, Lauren Leif, Timothy Biggins, Sharon Williams, Marjorie Berg, Christina Roberts, Robert MeShaw from MDM Transportation, Attorney Frank Fitzgerald, Catherine Ukeness, and written comment from Brett McDonald, Counsel to Great Woods, and written comment from Alan and Peggy LeBrod. Alan and Peggy LeBrod. So unfortunately, their testimony is not part of the public record. So if any of those individuals wish to submit additional testimony, or if this board decides to reopen the hearing, we certainly would be happy to take testimony from you as well. So with that said, thank you.
Yep.
There is also some potential confusion about prior votes of this board. And so I would be, I would like the board to consider a motion to rescind any votes that may have occurred in connection with this site plan review that could be construed as approving the site plan itself or any specific conditions relating thereto. If that were to pass, I then would suggest a motion to reopen the public hearing on this matter. So is there any discussion?
Well, I think we should open the, we should rescind it all, is what I think.
Just reopen it. Oh, sorry, and just reopen it.
Yes, reopen it.
All right. So can someone make a motion to rescind any votes that may have occurred here?
I make a motion to rescind any, you know, where's the actual wording of it? Motion to rescind any votes that may have occurred in connection with the site plan review that could be construed as approving the site plan itself or any specific conditions relating thereto.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed. So that passes. So I would ask for a motion to reopen the public hearing on this site plan review. And here, whatever evidence may be presented by the applicant, butters, town officials, or members of the public regarding the project.
I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. So we have a motion to reopen the public hearing. I would ask if people wish to provide evidence, speak to this matter, that they try their very best to provide new information after the May 2nd meeting. It may be hard to remember everything that was done beforehand, but we'd ask that you do your best to do so. So the public hearing is open. Who would like to hear, who would like to speak on this matter? Attorney Fitzgerald.
Please.
Yeah.
Could you sign in when you do so? There's a sign-in sheet there. Thank you.
Understand, I think I understand them.
Hearing?
Yes.
My comments will be very brief. I think we understand the vote that the, we now are beginning a new public hearing on the matter itself. However, the record, prior record still stands as I understand it.
So I will reiterate to the best of my ability what Attorney Timmy had to say. So all evidence and testimony presented to this board on or before May 2nd will be accepted and it's permitted by the court. Anything after May 2nd is no longer part of the record, and that we need additional, people who wish to comment further on that can do so and provide additional information and evidence.
So I, we, what we're talking about here is a warehouse use as a matter of right in the industrial garden park zone. The record from the prior hearings clearly demonstrate that the site plan application complies with the zoning bylaws, both in its design and operation. The board's approval, prior approval, was set forth in a notice of decision setting forth not only the findings of the board, but several conditions which were acceptable to the applicant. It also included an agreement from the applicant for certain infrastructure improvements, which was negotiated thoroughly with the town and which was approved by the applicant and in fact was embodied in a decision, which was approved by the board, subject only to further discussions with regret regarding to some of the conditions which were brought forth by the fire department and the police department. So basically, our testimony today is that we stand on the record of what we previously proposed to the board. However, we do have our expert, traffic experts and engineering experts here to answer any questions which may come up subsequent during this hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Fitzgerald? I do. I have a question. So it's my understanding that throughout the entire course of the hearings on this, that there had been discussions between the applicant, and I don't know if it's the proper phrase, the entity, that is the fields of Chestnut? And so would you let us know about some of those and what the fields of Chestnut and the applicant had seemed to come to an agreement about?
There was an agreement.
There was or was not?
There was a discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. There was a discussion with regard to the certain mitigation issue or certain mitigation items which would have would have been constructed to assist in the noise issues and visual issues and those kinds of things. And those discussions, I believe, came to a conclusion which had been agreed to prior to the revocation or whatever you want to call it, the determination of the approval.
And were any of those agreements part of the conditions that this board had voted on?
They were not.
And are you at liberty to say what some of those improvements, mitigation improvements were?
Probably not the right person to describe them, but it involved the construct, a very significant investment in the construction of a fence and certain other mitigating, also landscaping and those kinds of things, which would have been conducive to eliminating any, any issues with noise and or visual issues.
And none of those agreed to projects would have required additional site plan approval from this board?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Fitzgerald.
Through the chair?
Yeah. Okay. Part of that agreement with fields was a right turn.
Sorry, I can't hear.
Could you stand so we, everyone can hear your question, please?
Part of that agreement.
Sign in.
Was to have a right turn only coming out of the fields, out of the warehouse. Right turn only from Chestnut to Shaker. That was part of the agreement. Now it's part of the objections that came up from both fire and police departments regarding problems. I will remind people of that, please.
So, so we're kind of running into the issue of, you mentioned the objections to the police and the fire. We really can't discuss those?
Okay. So. Part of the agreement was a right turn only exiting the warehouse. And that does require your approval, as I recall.
Good question.
I can speak to that?
Yeah, speak to it if you wish.
I don't believe, I'm not sure that the... I'm not sure that the right turn only was a part of the agreement with the fields, I believe, but however, it was a condition of the...
Of the planning board. Of the planning board. Yeah. Yep. Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on this matter?
I'll put people on.
Okay. Well, let's just take this fine gentleman right here.
Please, please approach.
Please.
Your question on the matter generally, before you close the business or on this particular issue that Mr. Fitzgerald has just spoken to.
So we, anything that was testified to or provided evidence to this planning board after May 2nd, we really cannot consider in our decision-making unless it is put back into the public record. I think I did that.
You did.
I did that right.
My name is Tim.
Can you go on that tape that has the video? Thank you.
Yes. My name is Tim. I'm 03 Canterbury Circle. My question, my question deals with the procedural issue. At the beginning of the meeting this evening, there was discussion about what I'll call notice defects. And I'd like the board and the town's attorney to go into some detail about notice defects that strike two meetings.
So I'm not equipped to answer that question. Jesse, do you feel comfortable addressing that?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll grab this again.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to be clear, so I mean, there were arguments that the, that the notice was deficient for the May 16th meeting. The agenda for that day had indicated that it would be a meeting to discuss, I think it was just simply to approve conditions that had been discussed at the May 2nd meeting and did not, it wasn't very broad as far as what other things may have occurred. I think that arguably it was still permissible, but it also was arguably not. And being a better move to at least come back and address those issues in the context of a remand where we agree that those two meetings, because they've sort of flowed out of that initial agenda error, if you will, should be stricken from the record.
And, and so it was approved by the judge to return it to this board?
Was it approved by the judge, Mr. Chair, or was it a stipulation that the parties entered into that the judge approved?
Good question.
It was the latter.
So that the community understands this, there was negotiation then between the parties. It wasn't a judicial order.
Good point.
It was an agreement between the parties that this would be a matter of further negotiation, and the judge, having no objection to that, agreed to the stipulation. Have I represented the facts accurately?
Just, and I'll allow other council to speak as well. I think that's typically the structure, and this one, the judge encouraged us to get to this point as well, I think. Without putting words in the judge's mouth that I don't exactly remember, but I think it seemed like to the judge as, well, this was a way to clean up some of the procedural issues that may or may not have to be resolved.
And another issue, Mr. Chairman. In consideration of the stipulation, have the parties agreed to waive any legal issues surrounding the notice defects? Is this now a settled issue? And is that now the law of the case, that there is no notice defect or the notice defect has been cured in exchange for this stipulation?
Neither party waived any arguments regarding the notice issue. I think the hope would be that by coming back and doing this, it would render that issue moot, because anything that happened after that notice is no longer part of the board's future decision. But neither the town nor the applicant waived any arguments or defenses as part of this remand.
Thank you. One final question. You've been very patient.
Yeah.
Because two meetings were stricken, the record is not now before the board, is it the board's intention to revisit those meetings in their entirety with invitations to the community, that they offer testimony anew so that the record is perfected and preserved?
It is my firm belief, so we did reopen the public hearing, and given the weather conditions, that we will like, we will likely continue this again. So if more people wish to come and testify. But we are under a time limit by the court to finish this up within 90 days. And if this board decides that they wish to see another review of that traffic study or a review of something else, that may take some time. I felt it incumbent to move forward with this meeting so that we can start the process. And it's not only fair to the applicant, but it's also fair to the town to eventually come to some resolution on, on this issue. Because I'd hate for Mr. Punderson or Ms. Chair Swallow to resign, be down to two of us.
Yes.
So.
I appreciate your appearance, Mr. Chairman. I'm fascinated with procedure, as you can tell. Did the court issue its own order that this be resolved within 90 days, or was that... Or was that part of the body of the stipulation that the parties agreed to?
That was part of a negotiated, proposed order that the judge signed. And I should say it is 90 days without leave of court. So it is not impossible to go beyond 90 days if there is good cause shown and a judge agrees with that extension.
And finally, whose burden is it to show good cause?
I would say whoever is seeking an extension beyond the 90 days, they would have that burden.
Thank you.
And just so, so you know how this works as well. So each planning board member is appointed for a term of office. Mine ends on June 30th. I, I think it might be April 30th, or June 30th. So I may not be reappointed. I felt it incumbent that I have been here during each and every session, that rather than leave it to these two to stand on their own, if I'm not reappointed, that we should put some urgency into this, so that the people who have participated in this and have done their very, very best on all this to make a decision, will be here to make that decision. So.
The, the date is April 15th of 24.
Thank you, Mr. Punders. Thank you.
Thank you. I must admit, that is the most thorough questioning from anyone that I've seen in about three years.
It made me listen, I know that.
Certainly. Sign in first, please.
Sure.
Thank you. Attorney Seth Stratton, I'm a colleague, a colleague of Attorney Fitzgerald. And I worked with Attorney Beltray Timmy on the litigation. And I just want to clarify, Attorney Beltray Timmy disagrees with me, I'm sure he can clarify. We brought a complaint in land court, raising a number of alleged deficient, legal deficiencies. The town moved to dismiss, challenged our position. We were heard before the court. And as is the case often with a land court, and, and more often with a land court than other courts, the judge had fully read the papers and heard from us, and basically previewed for us what her ruling would have been. She did not agree with some of the claims that we had brought, but did agree, and I believe fairly telegraphed to the town, that she agreed with the position on the notice deficiency, and that's how she would rule, and strongly encouraged the parties for judicial efficiency to agree to an order, rather than have her have to write a ruling. And so to the extent, and I, they were very thorough questions, to the extent that there was any suggestion, even though we were adverse to the town, that the town was agreeing to something that wasn't already clear, that was going to be ruled upon, and it was simply judicial economy, I think that's an important point to be raised, because the land court judge did tip her hand, for lack of a better term, that she was concerned and did believe that notice was deficient with respect to those meetings.
Thank you. Just to make the public aware, it's not unusual for a decision of this board to get appealed to, to land court. I've been a member of this board for six-plus years. I've been sued as a planning board member six different times for decisions that we've made. You know, the, it's, the right is available to people to appeal it, and some, some do it. Sometimes we're overturned, other times we're not. So, all right. So is there anyone else this evening that would like to be heard on this matter? Please step forward. And we will get to the people on Zoom right after the speaker.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Bosworth. I live at 45 Noah Drive in East Long Meadow. I've listened to the proceedings. I've attended some of the meetings. And I just wanted to bring up some points that I don't think have ever been addressed.
Okay.
Main thing is, I'm all in favor of this warehouse, because of the economic development that it will bring to the town, the jobs it'll bring to the town, the tax revenue that it'll bring to the town, and stealing. And as far as the residents of the Field of Chestnuts, I'm sorry, but you purchased in an industrial zone. You're surrounded four sides by industry. And it's been in town for many, many years. I don't really have a lot of sympathy. And as to the traffic flow and all that other stuff, no one knows how many vehicles are actually going to go through. It's, it's an intangible number. Nobody, to this point, can say definitely what's happening. My main concern is the future of the town. We have a property that's been vacant for exorbitant a number of years, that has hazardous waste, that needs remediation, at a cost that's going to be very high. Part of this building has been condemned for years. Basically, roughly, if my calculations, based on the current tax rate, the mill rate, the town is receiving about $105,000 in taxes per year on this current property. Estimating this building, I have no idea what the actual value of this building is going to be, once it's built. But if it's a $10 million value, you're going to go from 105,000 tax revenue to roughly 750,000. That's about a $645,000 increase in tax revenue. Not to mention the number of jobs it's going to create. And I just want to remind the board that Mass General Law, regarding, excuse me, the master plan, section four, specifically requests the planning board, take into consideration economic development and job creation, of which this will do all of that. And I don't know how stringent the, the new master plan is, but to me, this is a vital thing for the town, especially when we're going to spend $177 million on a new high school. And we lost about $100,000, roughly, I'm not sure exact number, on 70 Maple Street, which is a derelict building, sitting there that needs hazardous waste remediation. And that's the primary reason why that building never sold. And there's no current plan that I am aware of, of what the town is going to do with that. And the town took a $68,000 tax hit when they took over that property. So I just hope the planning board will take economic development, job opportunity and growth, and tax revenue in consideration when they make their decision.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, no, we're going to go to Zoom. So, Don, how do you want to handle this?
Well.
Because I can't see that far on who wants, who's there.
So I'm going to go to, the first hand that came up was Elias. So.
I think it's a mistake to talk on our project with this.
Hello. Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Would you please state in your address, please?
Yes. So my name is Elias Nicolaitis, 82 S Maple Westfield. I am, I would have liked to talk about GMH Fence, if it's possible to reopen that.
So, no, we voted to continue that to our next meeting, which is February 6th.
Okay. Now, is it possible to attend via Zoom, or would I have to be in person?
You still can attend by Zoom.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next, Dan?
Yeah, hang on. Green Miles Lipton, L.L.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. Would you please state your name and your address, please?
Thank you. Michael Pill. I'm a partner at Green Miles Lipton in Northampton. And I'm here on behalf of the Fields at Chestnut. And I appreciate your allowing me to speak when I wasn't able to get down there tonight. The, in the interest of time, which you noted, I submitted this past Friday, a six-page memorandum. And our traffic engineer, Robert Michaud, while the submission was very lengthy, because he included two prior memos and the agreement over Shaker, the Shaker intersection, there's really only four new pages that he submitted. And what we are, I hope that, first of all, those documents could be entered into the record now that the hearing has been reopened and taken into consideration by the board. And the second thing is, I would hope that in the interest of time, which as you noted, is an important issue here, that anyone and everyone who wants to speak should and easily can, I think, reduce their comments to writing. All they have to do is send an email. I believe the email address on the town's website is planning@eastlongmeadowma.gov. I think I've got that right. If not, go to the planning board website and click on email, and you'll get the email link. And I think it would be very helpful for comments to be submitted in writing. It certainly forces all of us to organize our thoughts. And beyond that, in the interest of time, if there are questions, I'd be happy to try to respond to them. And with respect to any possible agreement, I think I'm ready and willing, and I believe the folks at Chestnut are, to reopen discussions with the applicant, to see if we can reach some resolution that everyone can, can live with. Thank you.
So, Mr. Pill, I have a question for you. So you say you are counsel for the Fields of Chestnut?
Yes.
Are you counsel for Fields of Chestnut, Inc., or the association? And how does that work for individuals who don't agree with these proposed agreements that you have with the applicant?
They have every right to speak their minds. My client is the Fields at Chestnut Condominium Trust. And my understanding is that there was discussion. I met with the board initially. I've had, I believe, at least a couple of open Zoom meetings for which I haven't charged. And I have offered to have additional Zoom meetings with the membership. And my understanding is, is that a, a significant majority of the membership supported engaging and continuing with my services. But of course, anyone who disagrees is more than welcome and has every right to come to the planning board as an individual. And indeed, even those who agree with my representing, you know, is, is free to come. I just hope, as I said, in the interest of time, that they would put all of their comments in writing. And I think that way they'll be better organized, and it will save time on behalf of everyone. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your recommendation. However, if anyone would like to speak, rather than submit their, in writing, feel, we will feel free to have you come and speak to the planning board. So, thank you.
I still don't see how we can represent them. When people came up to me, residents of it, of the Fields, and said.
Can you speak?
So I don't see how you could say you represent them totally, because I had residents of the Fields come up and say that you don't represent their, their thoughts.
I represent the condominium trust, which controls the common areas and is responsible for maintenance and repair of the condominium. That doesn't necessarily mean there is unanimity. And so if there are people who disagree, they have every right to act on their own. But the majority of the membership, as I understand it, supported the decision by the board to engage and retain my services. And that's where we stand. In other words, the condominium trust is not the individual unit owners. Okay? We're talking about a separate entity. The condominium trust controls all of the common areas, and also is responsible for looking out for and trying to protect the interests of the individual unit owners. And certainly, anytime you get something like 100 owners with very sophisticated, experienced people together, I can't imagine you're ever going to get unanimity.
I still don't understand how, I still don't understand how you could say you represent them, because them is the total, the total community. And I know people in that community that say that those aren't their, their thoughts or feelings. So.
I'm not saying I represent, oh, let's be clear, the condominium trust. And those members who support the condominium trust decision are the ones I speak for. But my client is the legal entity, the condominium trust. That is not the individual unit owner. So make no mistake. And if I've created any misunderstanding on that score, I apologize. No, I do not claim to represent all of the individual unit owners of the condominium. My client is the condominium trust, and I hopefully have explained the role and the, and the status of the condominium trust. And I certainly have been in this situation before. Sometimes I'm engaged to represent certain individuals. Other times, I'm engaged to represent the condominium trust.
Thank you.
Thank you. I still don't agree with, but thank you.
Our representative, please. I'm Jack Morn.
Oh, I'm speaking.
The Fields of, of the Fields. I am on the Board of Trustees. Mr. Pill has retained with 100% vote of the Board, all six members of the Board of Trustees. He represents completely.
I understand that.
So.
Thanks.
But there's people outside of that that don't agree with you, so.
Very few.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you. Don, next. Thank you, Mr. Pill.
Thank you.
For those, for those people that might, you know, that are on Zoom, you know, I indicated earlier that I believe there's a strong belief that this remaining members of the planning board will vote to continue this, probably another two weeks. So hopefully the weather, which might have kept people from attending, would be better. And that if you wanted to attend in person, it would give you the opportunity to do so. So with that in mind, you know, if you still wish to speak, please raise your hand. So.
Christina Cooper's on her way in.
Yeah.
Mr. Pill, all set?
Yep. Hello? You're muted.
Christina.
Thank you. Sorry. When I was added, I couldn't hear your audio. So hello, I am Christina Cooper. And I am a resident of East Long Meadow at 142 Meadowbrook Road. And I have been to many of these meetings. When I heard that it had been reopened, I just wanted to make sure. I kept to the forefront of everyone's mind on the planning board, the issues of traffic that have been brought up. And a previous person who spoke tonight said, we can't possibly know what the traffic would be. And a previous person who spoke tonight said, we can't possibly know what the traffic would be. I beg to differ that the traffic impact study that was done by the applicant used what many traffic studiers use, which is the Trip Generation Manual of the Institute of, oh gosh, I T E, so sorry, I forget what that stands for. But they study the production of traffic all over the United States, and they produce statistics. And the, the manual that was used indicated a warehouse of this size, of this type, with this many bays, will produce a likely amount of traffic of 968 more trips in and out of town, including 338 semi-truck trips into East Long Meadow. And just to say again, that number, I imagine it's a minimum. It's horrifying, it's terrifying. I do not think our streets can handle it. I do not think our emergency services could handle if we had that many trucks coming through town. And the planning board has no control over how those trucks drive, what streets they use. Sadly, the only thing we can do to stop having this amount of traffic take over our town is not to approve this warehouse project. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, Don.
Sheila Goggan.
There we go. Oh, and start video. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, good, so sorry. My name's Sheila Goggan, I lived at 26 Fields Drive. The question I have, and it's kind of a legal issue, is that, especially because I was present at the meeting, I think in June, when so many people from Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, fire chief, the people representing the services in the town spoke and, and provided, I think, quite a perspective, a cross-sectional perspective. Some were very supportive of the continuation of the, the plans, and some were not. But when I heard that, especially today, when you said that nothing will be considered that happened at a meeting, I'm trying to understand what drove the issue of why all of that effort of other people commenting and being involved now can't be considered? I just don't understand the, the legal process. Could you explain that a little briefly?
Well, we, we spent a lengthy amount of time earlier in the meeting discussing it, so I'll try to give you a truncated version of it. So the decision of the planning board was appealed to land court of Massachusetts by the, by the applicant. They cited a number of things that they felt were deficient. And one of the things they felt was deficient was a notice of a meeting on, I believe, May 16th of 2023, in which this board voted to reconsider our initial vote on this issue. And the court, the parties, the town and the applicant, apparently provided an order which the land court approved, remanding this back to the planning board to cure the deficient notice. And therefore, anything after the sixth, after May 2nd would not be considered as part of the record moving forward.
Okay, I think that's what I don't understand because I, I listened to, you know, because when, when I listened to the judge when she was speaking in summary to everyone, and again, I was just trying to absorb as a citizen. What is it, because I can understand that after what happened at May 2nd and then June, I'm just trying to understand why all that information and data going into, you know, the process is completely eliminated as part of the consideration? That, that's what I'm as a citizen trying to understand. You're, you explained the legal issue, but it just seems a little bit confusing to me as a towns person.
So I'll, I'll ask attorney Timms, who's nodding to me, to give a quick, a quick response.
Yeah, just, just to clear up any confusion too. It's not that there was something improper about what was said or that those same statements or evidence can't be offered again here. It's that in the context of that prior notice issue, the fact that they were introduced at those subsequent meetings was inappropriate. So there's no reason that the exact same people can't come tonight or at the next meeting and say exactly what they said at a prior hearing, and that could be the basis for the planning board's next decision. It's just that they are basically, they do not exist in the context of this hearing as we sit here today like they never happened, but they could happen again.
So if the police chief came in, the fire chief came in, the deputy superintendent of D W came in again to a public meeting or a public hearing and had comments, then we could take that into consideration again. Or moving forward, okay?
Thank, thank you, I wanted to clarify that exact issue because there was so much data that people were sharing. But we need to do it again. I can understand why they didn't come in tonight.
Is that a, is that a reference to the bad weather?
Absolutely. No, that's the only reason I'm not there.
Well, I'm glad you were able to join us on the new technology that we have.
Oh, oh no, I do a lot of Zoom.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Okay. All right, anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir. Please.
Evening. So my name's John Power. I live at 17 Broadleaf Circle in the Fields at Chestnut, who's in a butter to this project. A lot of good things said already, I just want to touch on, it was mentioned earlier, the traffic engineer for the applicant is here. And my questions tend to go towards things that were in the traffic impact study that I wanted to get a little bit more clear.
So can I ask you a question? So were those questions answered prior to May 2nd?
I don't know if they've been asked at all.
Okay, okay, thanks.
So the proposed increase in truck traffic is 338 additional trucks on East Long Meadow roads every day, 24 hours a day, which averages out to 14 trucks an hour. One truck every four minutes, I'm doing the math for you here. All day and all night. And in my view, this creates an objectionable noise and pollution situation and creates a safety hazard at locations like the rail trail crossing, the intersections and, and the intersections at either end of Chestnut Street. If 40% of the new truck traffic is expected to travel west on Chestnut Street, as was illustrated in the traffic impact study, that puts 135 trucks per day, six trucks per hour, one truck every 10 minutes, driving through a residential area, which is, again, in my opinion, objectionable. For the I T E Trip Generation Manual 11th Edition, hourly distribution of entering and exiting truck trips by land use, using land use code 150, the three busiest times for truck traffic are 9 to 10 a.m., where 9.9% of the total volume of trucks, or 33 trucks, 10 to 11 a.m., where 9.7% of the total, or 33 trucks, and 11 to 12 noon, where 11.2% of the total, or 38 trucks, would be on the road. So when they did the study, they said, we'll look at 7 to 9 a.m. as that's when all the commuters are going. And the volume of trucks is very low during that time based on I T E. However, right after then, from 9 to noon, you've got a considerable volume of trucks going through. And I wanted to clarify that because if people don't look at this kind of data and you start thinking, well, where, when do all these 338 trucks show up? That's generally the time, 9 to noon. If 40% of this truck traffic is expected to travel west on Chestnut Street, using the 38 trucks, it would be 15 trucks per hour, one truck every four minutes, driving through that same residential area at, at that 11 to 12 timeframe. I find that objectionable. It's already hard enough for traffic to come out of any of the side streets, including the Fields of Chestnut, with the current traffic volume, never mind adding this many more trucks. Just wanted to have that point considered. So based on this brief discussion, I urged the planning board to deny this application by citing three specific sections of the town bylaws. Section 363.2a, which points out that unreasonable noise created by trucks should be considered as, there's a noise ordinance in town. And it doesn't specifically say trucks, but I'm going to say that 338 trucks backing in, braking to get in or out, idling possibly, could create a noise issue for the town. Section 450.1-0 will remind the board that the zoning bylaws, laws are to lessen congestion in the streets. Direct quote, lessen congestion in the streets. And my view is adding 338 trucks per day does not lessen congestion on the streets. Finally, section 450-5.0a, where direct quote, no use of the industrial garden park district land is permitted, which is objectionable by reason of noise, odor, vibration, et cetera, or for any other reason which may render the use or occupancy of the land and buildings objectionable. And again, citing the traffic volume, the volume of trucks that would be added to the current road conditions. I find, my view is that that's objectionable, and I encourage the planning board to consider these three sections of the bylaws decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening, for the record, Rob Lebeck, for the site civil component of the project, as you remember. I just think it's important to say a few items here. First of all, I wanted to make it clear that a denial will not stop the use of the property. We can't, we can't all assume that there's not an existing 500,000 square foot building on the property. We can't assume that this is not a viable industrial location. It's already zoned that way. It's very, I think it's very important that we look at the fact that we can file for site plan approval or occupancy of the building. I can tell you that I've already been charged with looking at options, as you can imagine. Someone who owns a large industrial property of this nature, has a Plan A, has a Plan B, et cetera. Those Plan Bs, I can tell you transparently, that those Plan Bs and Cs all have trucks. They all have, a lot of them have outdoor storage. A lot of them have outdoor uses, different than what we're proposing. With those uses, what would likely happen is the building itself would be partially demolished. Let's say 80% to 85% of the building would remain, would be remediated, would be reused, both inside and outside. There may be site improvements that we have to affect. Those would affect likely buffers, stormwater basins, other requirements that come along with the site planning. This would be for the use of that existing building. Won't look the same, won't have state-of-the-art controls or mechanicals, state-of-the-art controls for traffic. There may or may not be mitigation requirements that come along with that if and when we have to come forward with a Plan B or a Plan C. So we understand you have a very difficult decision before you, but everyone, Fields of Chestnut, the planning board, our group, we all have to consider that there is a Plan B or a Plan C. This building is not going away without a new state-of-the-art building that can be marketed. Without that, as you guys are aware, and as the gentleman in the meeting earlier had mentioned, there's a lot of costs associated with the redevelopment of this site, of the cleanup of this site. This will be a project in some way, shape or form. I'd love to be done with it fairly soon before I completely have to retire or something like that, like you had mentioned. That said, we might be here for a Plan B or a Plan C. I can tell you that those are realities. I personally think that having a state-of-the-art building with great traffic controls, with conditions that the planning board can control, and we can have a good-looking building there with input from the planning board, is the best route. Because I can tell you, Plan B and Plan C are not as sexy. They're not going to look the same, and they're likely going to have a lot of the items included in them. The concerns are going to exist there. This is an existing site with a 500,000 square foot warehouse. So I appreciate you giving me the, the opportunity to say that, but it's not going away. So it'd be nice to have something we can all control and be proud of. Thank you.
You say it. Thank you. You know, just on the subject of uses, so, you know, I, I go on Facebook and I watch the town forum, and there was some lady that started a discussion last night about it. And, you know, people were saying that, you know, you should put housing up there, but the town doesn't allow, the town didn't allow housing. I mean, people just put the absolute silliest, stupidest stuff up there and rile people up. And I think Cassie was certainly on the board at the same time I was, when we probably spent eight months, if not more, working on a zone that would have allowed mixed-use housing for that site. Mr. Fitzgerald was involved. It then went, and you were involved, it went to town council, and after a period of time, they made some changes. That housing, someone could still do housing there. And COVID came, and we all know it changed the entire world. And that developer walked away for whatever reason. And to say, and not once, not once, during the eight months that it was in front of this planning board, did one person complain. So for who, you know, people, pay attention. If you're going to post stuff and try to rile people up, that's just nonsense. If you don't know what you're talking about, don't put it up there, period. Because the stuff that came out of people after that was just shocking. So, all right. Yes, ma'am? Yes?
Seeing we were on the topic of mixed usage and rallying people up, and I'm hoping I'm not going to be the one to do it for you guys. Talk about mixed use, and I guess this-
They state your name and address, please.
Toronto, 109 Appleton Street in Springfield. So Attorney Fitzgerald, your group. I wanted to propose a mixed use and see if you guys were open to it. I heard Zoom.
Yeah, so this is, this is really not the, this is really, we're, we're here to specifically hear a proposal for the use of the project
Absolutely.
as a warehouse. So I would ask that you speak to that.
It's under that, so you wouldn't have to change the zoning at all. So if you're open to it, I can leave this pamphlet for you. And it's actually vertical farming. It's on the rise, there's only 12 of them in the United States.
So again, can we please speak to the issue of a proposed warehouse? So again, can we please speak to the issue of a proposed warehouse? I'm going to ask, you get one more shot.
Numbers. And that is all I had to say. So you guys have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Sir?
Yeah, good evening. I'm Jerry Siletta. I live at three eighty five Chestnut Street. I got actually a few questions. You said that anything after the May meeting is not considered part of the record?
After May second.
After May second. Is, what about emails that went to the board after May second?
No, they are not part of the testimony that will be considered.
Okay. Is there going to be additional public hearing meetings?
I've stated a couple of times that I believe that the three of us will vote to continue this public hearing. Until our next meeting. So if people want to present additional evidence or testimony, they will be able to do so. I've not taken a poll from these two to see how they're thinking. I know how I'm going to think, so.
The other question I have is, you know, since this started, there's all numbers of different numbers of trucks or trips. I've heard nine hundred on the Zoom, Zoom person. I heard three hundred from the previous gentleman from a model. I heard four hundred and something at the last meeting. I know nobody has a handle on it because you're not going to unless you know what it's going to be used for. And trucks don't come every three minutes like a model says. You don't get. Four hundred and divided by number of minutes in a day. That's not how it works. They go in waves. That's how they get dispatched and that's how they arrive. So I'll be prepared for the next meeting to have this conversation. About traffic flow internal to the distribution center. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard tonight on this matter? Okay, go ahead. So we're going to go probably another fifteen minutes, which would be just about seven thirty. And then we will see if there's interest in continuing until the next meeting. So.
I apologize. I've spoken several times tonight. I'd like to remind the planning board, there's going to be one hundred bays active for trucks. There's going to be a number of turns that are to make a warehouse profitable on those bays. It's not going to be one and a half trucks a bay per day. It's going to be three, four, five trucks per day to make that warehouse profitable. You multiply that by five, by one hundred bays, two trips. You're looking at eight to nine hundred trucks a day for this warehouse to be profitable. I did some research. It takes thirty minutes to unload a palletized fifty three foot trailer. One stack. If it's double stacked, it's one hour, which means they can try to trail around in two hours. Unload and load. If it's efficient. If it's not efficient, figure four hours. The numbers we're seeing three twenty eight for trucks. It's a low ball. It has to be for this to be profitable. I ask you to consider that in your decisions very, very carefully. Perfect example for truck right now, tonight, so whether tonight. Imagine a truck weighing eighty thousand pounds and Mr. Punderson, you mentioned this one of the first meetings, coming down Chestnut Hill trying to stop. It's not going to. Somebody's going to get hurt. Years ago, I was stuck on Route ninety one in a major snowstorm. Nobody was moving and I'm sitting there watching the trailer truck in front of me slide sideways on a slight incline. That's going to happen on Chestnut Hill. No question about in my mind. Some poor person is going to step out on the rail trail and not press the button for that sign. To flash and that truck is going to be trying to beat that light going through on Shaker Street and someone's going to get hurt and killed. And I know everyone in this room has been stuck on Long Meadow Street or Converse Street with a truck trying to beat the light coming down Converse Street. And looked at that truck coming right at them. That's what we're going to say. I've watched traffic very carefully since this whole thing started. The corner of Shaker and Chestnut. If that truck driver is not good, he's going to take out somebody making that left turn onto Chestnut. If they're going out Chestnut onto Benton Drive, they can't make that turn. They take up both lanes and half the lane for the traffic coming down Benton Drive. It just doesn't work. You can go out there, you can sit, you can observe and see what's going on. Please. Take that. You are intelligent, young people who can go out there and see for your own self. Make your decisions, not just on the traffic studies, but on your own observations. Look at the numbers. They don't make sense. So please take that into consideration and I thank you for all your work on this. It's greatly appreciated. One last comment. The field is not opposed to any kind of development. We just let Mr. Punderson send men use the right development for the town. And you put this warehouse in, you're going to have every homeowner on Chestnut Street filing for abatement or property taxes. Not just the fields from Benton to Shaker, we're all going to be applying at all the adjacent properties. Because if you ever lived close to traffic, tractor, trailer, traffic, traffic. The vibration, you'll be straight in the pictures hanging in your house every single day. I lived in Western Drive and Long Meadow for twenty five years. Throw a house in, wasn't on the, on the corner. We straighten pictures every single day from that truck traffic coming out from ninety one. So vibration is real. Foundations will be affected. People's lives are going to be grossly affected. We're building a new high school. We're going to be exposing our young people to air pollution from these, this traffic. What kind of health hazards are we going to be exposing them to for the rest of their lives? We have to consider that. You have to consider that very carefully. I thank you for your time and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. So I, I'm just going to say on behalf of Mr. Punderson and I appreciate being called young.
I think I'm still young.
I'm probably older than you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. And then, and then the speaker in the back and then I think we're going to make a motion.
I'll be brief again, Attorney Seth Strad for the applicant. We heard several comments this evening on traffic and we have our traffic engineer here listening tonight and we will prepare. A response in writing on any of the points not previously addressed. But I did want to make a point because we talked several times about what was included, is included in the record and what is not. Based on that May second. And I looked at the draft decision that the town prepared, laying out all the documents and supporting materials that have been. Previously submitted prior to the May second deadline. There is a traffic impact study and appendix prepared by McMahon Associates dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty two. Final revision, December thirteenth, twenty twenty two, part of the record. There's a peer review of traffic impact study prepared by VHB Inc. Dated January sixth, twenty twenty three, final revision, February sixteenth, twenty twenty three. On behalf of the town, reviewing the traffic expert of the applicant. That is part of the record. There is a response to the peer review comments of the traffic impact study prepared by McMahon Associates dated February second, twenty twenty three. Final revision, February twentieth, twenty twenty three. Applicant responding to comments of the town. And finally, submitted on behalf of the Fields of Chestnut and their traffic expert, Robert J. Michaud. PE dated February twentieth, twenty twenty three. I, one thing I know is I don't know about traffic. I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm a lawyer. The three gentlemen and organizations that I mentioned are professional traffic engineers who do this for a living. They have submitted professional reports that are part of the record before this board. And I urge the planning board to consider that record as they consider reasonable conditions for this application. Thank you.
Just, my memory is still pretty good. The three thirty eight number. I think was put forward by the applicant, peer review by the town confirmed that approximate number. And then Mr. Michaud from MDM. Said that the method that was used by both the applicant's study. And the peer review study was an appropriate method or formula to use as well. And then, so that, that, that number, I, I think is. Probably one that I would consider when I would make a decision, but, sir. And I think we will entertain a motion to continue to the next meeting.
My name is Roland Boldak. I had spoken prior. I don't know where. Minutes lie. I've looked at the minutes just now on the phone and my name came up. In June of twenty three. So.
So you're safe.
Well, those are not received because we got rid of everything after May, correct?
Everything after May second.
So if I was in June of twenty three, they're going.
Let me see.
You were here a couple of times.
You are not on the list as having spoken at our June twentieth, twenty three meeting.
Thought it was the June, it was the June date prior to that.
So there was no public testimony taken on May sixteenth.
Yep.
That was a working group that the planning board had, kind of digest everything that we had heard over a period of time. We then held another public hearing on June twentieth. And you are not listed as a speaker on June twentieth.
So I'd like my.
So everything that you spoke of prior to that time is part of the testimony for us to consider.
Okay.
You had wonderful testimony.
Thank you. Thank you. You are still talking about three hundred and thirty eight vehicles. Coming and going from this facility daily. Actually, that's just inbound, correct?
Please, if you could. Don't get into a very long thing.
Just want to know if it's in or out or combined.
Again, for the record, Jeff P and D, project manager with McMahon Associates, now at Bowman Company, just so the record's straight on that. The three thirty represented both entering and exiting vehicles that we presented in our traffic study.
So three thirty, three thirty eight in and three thirty eight out.
No combined.
No, combined.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
That's what, one hundred and sixty in, one hundred and seventy in, one hundred and sixty five in, one hundred and sixty five out.
Roughly.
For fifty doors on the north side, fifty doors on the south side. And what people are not considering is the amount of volume that they're bringing in, like the gentleman talked about. I've been driving for four years and the amount of volume that a fifty three foot trailer brings in. It does take a half hour to offload if they're single stacked, if they're double stacked. It does increase that time. Think of the small vehicles that have to distribute what they are bringing in. That's what's not in this plan. That's what no one's talking about. You're only talking about the large vehicles and the tractor trailers. That are going to clog our streets, that are going to wear down our streets. And when you pave them and you still run. An eighty thousand pound, seventy foot long tractor trailer over these roads, they create grooves. I've seen them during the cross Bronx in New York because of the heavy truck traffic. Granted, we're not going to see that, but. It's, it does put wear and tear on the roads for that many vehicles. The past warehouse was for manufacturing. We're only calling this a warehouse. This warehouse is for distribution to totally different animals, totally different. Distribution will clog your streets. I've tried to live in a sleepy town called Esau Meadow. I moved in here about thirty five years ago. My daughter said about thirty six years ago and I've seen it grow a lot. Lot of fantastic families come in and it's not just the families on Chestnut Street that are going to suffer from traffic. And congestion and a much heavier vehicle on the road because they're not just going to go down Chestnut Street. They will follow their GPS and go right through our rotary. They will try to climb Chestnut Street on a day like today. And I know what that's like. I just got done driving. That's why I got here late. It's slippery out and they're, they're going to make their deliveries no matter what because that's how they get paid. I get paid hourly. They get paid by the load. You can't tell them when to stop. They're owner operators. You cannot hold them and then tell them when to leave your facility. You cannot hold them against their will. When they're done, they leave no matter what. So that timing issue is going to happen during rush hour in the middle of the night. Like one of the, Sean and Jerry talked about, you can't control a schedule of fourteen per hour. Most of the drivers drive through the night, come in in the morning, deliver their freight and then sleep for ten hours because that's the regulations. They have to sleep for ten hours. How are you going to stay warm in the winter time that we've talked about? Who's going to police that you can only idle for five minutes because that is the regulation? If you idle more than five minutes, it's a five hundred dollar ticket going to the driver, not the company. Who's going to monitor this? Are we going to have policemen there all day? All night? Not going to have it. That traffic study that we had talked about, didn't we have to share that with Long Meadow? Or was Long Meadow doing their own traffic study? I'm just asking a question.
I don't know whether Long Meadow came and got a copy of it or not. I have no idea.
I was just wondering that.
And the trucks do vibrate. They call it a reverberation when the vehicle is empty. So half your freight coming in, they're not going to vibrate. They're just going to make this. That's kind of the feeling in this town of what it is. The reverberation is what goes through your house. Those vibrations just travel. And that many vehicles going up and down Chestnut, all the way through down through Main Street, down through Enfield. That is a lot of reverberation for all of our citizens. And, and, and anybody on the streets or visiting our town on the streets and seeing our fine restaurants. The tax revenue that one of the gentleman talked about will not repave your streets. On the fashion of how they're going to get worn out. They're not going to fix our intersections. When you try to make that turn from Chestnut Street down Shaker Road. And the trailer tracking, the off tracking is what it's called. What if seventy foot long vehicle is making that turn? You're going to take a sleeper unit, which most of the over the road drivers drive. And with a fifty three foot trailer, when they make that turn, they have to go into the left lane and try to make that narrow turn. Now you're shutting down the left lane from doing its travel. And the tractor trailer is trying to track. If they're not doing it properly, they're over the curb, they're over your lights, they're over your signs, they're over your town. That's one intersection. Never mind trying to get on the Benton Drive in the middle of rush hour at any other time. If they're not crossing all three lanes of traffic that are heading northbound, they're not going to make that turn properly. If they make a turn somewhere else, that off tracking is an issue everywhere the vehicles go. I know I do it. Also, Chestnut Street. They will ask for a curfew. They will ask for a curfew. It's done in every single town. And, and the town that I drive through, the selectman didn't like trucks. So he had a sign put up, no through trucks. Which one's like, and now no trucks and it, it leads right up to my facility. We can't go down our own road because the selectman had a sign put up, no through trucks. So if they do that on Chestnut. Where do you think the northbound trucks are gone? Rotary. They're not going to go up the hill. They're not going to go south. The drivers look at their GPS, rotary. Every truck is going to go through the rotary. I was recently at the Christmas celebration where they did the tree lighting. Have you ever seen a tractor trailer go through the rotary? That's one. Three or four more behind them. Imagine that. Three or four more. That's just three or four. And you're talking about. I'd have to say forty. And you're talking about, I'd have to say 40% are going to follow their GPS and just go north. The other ones are going to ask fellow drivers how they get in here. That's going to be down Chestnut or through Shaker Road. Hardly anybody's going to go eastbound. Uh, one of the conditions of approval that we could not accept uh, because it was after May 16 with idling of trucks on site to use exhaust filters. Not going to happen. The driver's not going to put something on his vehicle, especially when the stacks are 13 feet high. How long is he going to get up there? So little things like that, we can't do. You know, you talk about a traffic study. I travel for a living. I drive for a living. I drive these streets for a living. When they do a travel, a traffic study, the state of Connecticut does it all the time. They'll put a box. They put these hoses on the ground and they study the flow. I'm in and out of this town constantly, every single day, like everybody else here. Did anybody see those? I didn't. I don't know where they're getting their information from, but it didn't come from those that are physically monitoring the vehicles in and out. So your traffic studies. How good are they? I have to question that. One more thing, and I'll leave you alone. I give you a quiet night. 13 years I was vice president of the Wishes on Wheels convoy that generated money for Make-A-Wish in Connecticut. We held a truck convoy that left Willington, Connecticut, went down Route 84 to Manchester, Connecticut. Made a U-turn and came back, gave the kids rides. They loved it. We had 650 trucks annually. We could not have trailers on these vehicles because we would shut down Route 84. Granted, that's double the amount of what you're talking about, but I'm talking about from Willington to Manchester. Several zip codes. We're in one zip code. This is several zip codes long. When we launched the trucks with a police escort and they went slowly down the highway and then made the U-turn and came back. The vehicles were getting back while we still had vehicles on the property. That was without trailers. Think of how many vehicles we're talking about. 338 trucks cannot fit in this town daily. It just can't happen. I would do this for a living. I've seen that many vehicles, and I know the congestion it causes. It's not just about the tax ops. It's about where you live and the environment you live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a motion to do this to, um, Mr. Stratt, you indicated that you would together a report to respond to some of the traffic concerns that were raised, or I think you alluded to that.
Do you? Do the record if there is anything you presented tonight that hasn't already been raised, we can't really respond.
So are you okay, uh, February 6th to be able to have that response?
Sooner the better.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Have this room, we want to have this room on the second Tuesdays of the month.
Oh, is that done?
Just wanted to make sure that this room is available in here.
He's saying that it seems that the larger room here is only available for committee meetings on the second Tuesday of the month. And, uh, certainly, certainly, yes.
Okay, so that would be the 20th?
13.
That was the second meeting, which is the third week.
Sorry, this is the 20th.
So is that the 20th, Don?
20th, February 20th. So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to February 20th at 6:00 PM here at the Pleasant View Senior Center in this room.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. Um, I'm sure not everyone in the audience is happy to be back here on this snowy night. Okay. Do we have any updates? They. Since that you've started. Yeah, I'm here. Okay. And that we're still looking for a planner. Hope you enjoy your journey. So moved. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, guys.